Welcome to the Mound City Council. It's Tuesday, January 28th, 6:02. Can we do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda here. Does anybody have any amendments?
No amendments here.
And I got the, again, the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes. And then we also have our consent agenda. Does someone want to go through items A through E?
I can read it.
Okay.
The consent agenda is A, approve payment of claims; B, approve minutes, January 14, 2025, regular council meeting and the 14th workshop city council; C, approve Tyler Piper to POSC commission, three-year term, January 2025 to '27; D, emergency management Hennepin County all-hazard plan update; E, pay request number four in the amount of $35,670 to new look contracting for loss rate phase one improvements.
Okay, we got A through E. Does anybody want to pull any of those we're talking about?
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
Just, Sherry, is POSC Parks and Planning? Were there any other candidates other than Tyler?
No.
Which falls into our conversation earlier.
True.
I just had the question.
We ran the ad twice.
If we're gonna have discussion.
Thank you, that's all I want to know. I'm done.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Anybody want to pull anything? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Herrick?
Aye.
Councilmember McEnany?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Costellano?
Aye.
Mayor Holt?
Aye. All right, thanks. All right, so number five, we got comments and suggestions from any citizens that are present that their item is not on the agenda. If you want to come up, we give you three minutes. Hey, can you give us your name and address?
Good evening. Sherry Wallace, 2135 Overland Lane. Hello.
Hey.
I'm here again. I'm here before you tonight to talk about an initiative that the Harrison's Bay Association is pursuing. We have been doing conservation activities on Harrison's Bay since 2021. All of these activities have been funded by generous local donors, mostly lake shore residents. We have seen a huge improvement in the recreational quality of the lake due to our management of invasive species. Last year, we incurred a 55% reduction in our giving and a huge increase in the amount of money required to manage the Eurasian milfoil. The board has been researching opportunities to fund these conservation projects into the future, and we think we've come up with one that we want to mention and just give you an update on what we're doing. In 1973, the Minnesota Legislature created the Lake Improvement Districts. It is a special purpose government formed to pursue and fund lake improvement efforts. This lid would be under the governance of the city of Mound. There are currently two lids on Lake Minnetaka, St. Albans Bay and Carmen's Bay, and they're managed by three cities, Greenwood, Excelsior, and Orono. Forming a lid would allow us to have consistent funds for the management of invasives and water quality initiatives. It would provide equal contributions from homeowners and eliminate the time-consuming fundraising activities. Our volunteers then would be able to focus on conservation activities. How this works? Once approved by the city, a board is elected by the constituents of the district, and programs and budgets are set. This budget and tax levies are approved by constituents via the annual meeting and submitted to the city. The process to create a lid is extensive and provides a lot of legwork for us, the HBA Board. The process includes the DNR as an advisory board for the public and for the city. We've had multiple meetings with the DNR to confirm that our bay is a good candidate for this program and get examples of what's been done in other districts across the state. We've created a project timeline using the DNR flow chart, which describes the process. I have a copy for each of you. We met a couple weeks ago with Jessie and Noah to discuss the process, and obviously, we will need to have other discussions. We are definitely at this stage. The HBA Board will be focusing the next four months on building the proposal, communicating to our residents, and securing support signatures from over 50% of the households. Then, we will be presenting this petition to the city. Our current goal is to finish the creation process and submit a budget for 2026. We're here today to let you know that we will be pursuing these activities, to give you a heads up, to allow you to ask questions and to come up with a good communication plan to answer all the questions that you may have. So, that is it.
Does council have any questions? I, just so you know, we talked about this, I think, a few times. And I think it was actually before you even were on the board. No, there was another time before you. I think it was a different thing.
Oh.
This was back with Eric. And anyway, we have, the council has to be a support for them to be able to do this. And can you just remind the council when you get back to the podium? Like, what exactly our role is beyond just signing off?
Right, so the city's role? Well, in the process or afterwards?
Well, just, yeah, I mean.
I mean, afterwards is a little gray for me at this point, right? I know that you have to accept the budget and present it to Hennepin County, right, every year? And then the funds come to you, and then it's kind of a pass-through to the lid. So, that's that part of it, which we talked about a little bit. And then, in the process, the responsibility of the city is, once we provide you with our signatures, is there's a validation period. You will, the DNR will get our proposal at the same time you get the proposal. And the DNR will take some time to review that proposal. They will write up an advisory report, and you're the audience of it, as well as the public is the audience. And then it's coordinating a public hearing on it. And after the public hearing, you need to decide if this is something as a city council that you support.
Right.
This sounds like another layer of bureaucracy, but I haven't read enough into it. Just for the council to know, if you haven't read the Harrison Bay newsletter, which is, that it explains exactly what Ms. Wallace just explained to us in the newsletter.
I had a link to the DNR site.
But that the donations are down and that's all in there. And I just read it this morning. That's why I happened to see that it was there.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's in the follow-up stuff. It's not right up front in our emails, so you gotta kind of dig for it, but it's there.
So, bureaucracy, really what it is, is it's a way for lakes around Minnesota to do conservation activities where the residents agree to a levy, and that levy then goes directly to the conservation activities. So, the residents understand.
Like what kind of activities, for example?
Like vegetation management, so invasives. Same things we're doing today with donations, right? So, treating the curly leaf pond weed, which is suffocating lakes. Treating the Eurasian milfoil, which you guys have heard, you know, that's why we do boat monitoring and that kind of thing. Water quality monitoring and making sure, working with the DNR, rain gardens, education to residents, all of these conservation activities that directly impact that particular bay. It could be carp management. It could be removing carp from the bay, which we have, you know, hundreds of thousands of carp.
And is this just talking about Harrison Bay? Or are we talking about every bay?
No, this is very specific. So, we will present as part of our proposal where those boundaries are.
So, in other words, when I give my tax statement, if I live on the bay, obviously, I probably would have signed off on this in the first place.
Well, over 50%.
50% have to sign on this in the first place. But it would only go to them. It's not like a school district.
No, yeah, specific to those people.
So, none of us are gonna get this letter, you know, on the council. You know, probably most people aren't gonna get it because not everybody lives on the bay. We're just kind of the intergovernmental agency supporting, basically getting the check and pushing it back out to them, so.
And I would encourage you to talk to Orono about Carmen's Bay or talk to Excelsior or Greenwood about what they're doing in St. Albans Bay and what they've seen. I just looked at the levy for St. Albans Bay. They've been around since, I think, 2014 or something. But I think it was 2023, they suspended their levy because they had carryover money that they didn't use, and basically, the treatment, they didn't need to levy additional money onto people. So, every year, that's determined based on the budget to do the projects that are totally outlined, right? So, it's very, very specific. They have to approve the projects and approve the money towards that project and approve the levy at the annual meeting every year.
So, is it like Greenwood and Excelsior? Is it like another city committee?
No.
Like, how is it organized? Like?
It's a separate board altogether.
So, it's not like the planning commission in Parks and Open Spaces?
No. It's totally separate.
Okay. How many people are, I'm sure maybe every city is different.
I think the proposal outlines that, once we get to it, but I'm thinking probably five to seven board members that would be elected. Probably the first year, we would use the HBA board members just because if we're submitting a budget this year, you know, there might not be time to get new people involved. But after that, starting the next year, it would be an elected board.
So, your first issue is you gotta go convince 50% of your people.
Oh, we have a ton of stuff to do, right?
So, and then, again, I think, are you just telling us? Or are you kind of looking to see if we're somewhat supportive?
Oh, I don't want you to say anything, really. I mean, I want to start. I know the board likes to understand the concepts that are going on, right? And so, I'm here to say, this is what we're doing. This is what we're gonna be presenting to residents. If we don't get 50% support, I won't be back here.
Yeah, right, right.
So, I'm just kind of giving you a heads up. We think this is a really positive program, and the DNR is very, very supportive. They'd like to see all the bays in Lake Minnetaka beyond this.
Yeah.
I don't have the energy to get 50% of all the bays.
No.
I'm dealing with my little piece of the world right now, right?
I mean, I understand you're just giving us, like, the heads up on what you're working on.
I just wanna, yeah, kind of let you know, this is, hey, this is where we're at. If you guys want to do more research, if you want to see what Excelsior has to do to, like, manage this, or Jessie wants to call up the administrator there and understand that, great. I think Orono would be the best example. We're gonna keep our boundaries within Mound and all of Carmen's, I believe, is in Orono.
So, basically, would Mound be the clearinghouse for your money? I mean, how can we convince the taxpayers that we're using our staff to get your money out for Harrison Bay? How do we make a case for that?
Conservation.
For that portion of Mound, when we have lots of other areas.
That other base could do the same thing, right?
I would say also, it's like, for the people that, it would go to them if they voted for it. Like, if, like she said, if less than 50%, then it's just not even.
But we're still, we'd still be utilizing our staff. So, I'm just saying, we as a council need to understand
How much work?
directly where our taxpayer money is going, and if it's going to a portion of Harrison Bay, everybody in Mound is paying for that.
Well, that would be maybe something that Jessie wants to advise you on, you know? Because I would have no idea what that process. He seemed to think there was something similar that was going on.
So, we met, just to sort of get an idea of what this is, from the little bit of research we did as a staff, it seems like it'll just work like a TIF district, which is what we are, we operate several of those. And there are mechanisms to recoup staff time or costs that are incurred. It's usually not a lot, but if it is that simple, then it should be very straightforward, literally receive a check, cut a check, but.
And we could build in, if there's a city time, we could build that into the budget, right, of the conservation district.
So, our thought was kind of wait until we know that it's a thing for sure. I mean, if you come back, like you said, you don't have 50% of us.
I won't be back.
But that's our expectation, that there is a way to recoup, anyway.
Cool. So, again, I'm generally supportive of, you keep working on this and going forward. Obviously, if three of us aren't, right, then that's a problem. Then I'd say stop, right?
Or if you want more information, right?
If you want more.
I would want more information. Yeah, I would want more information.
Yeah.
From what I've looked into, I'm comfortable with you doing more, if you want to give everybody else more information, or Jessie, if you want to try to give us more information. But, you know, with your timeline, and you do come back, and again, maybe we don't see you again because 50% don't want to do it.
I just want a better understanding of how Mound is, how we play the role.
It's very little role, but, yeah. To get it up and going, I think it's a little bit. And like, again, if we can do some kind of back pay thing where, you know, we spend so many hours of staff, I agree 100%, like, we should be covered, right? It's still doing something good for Mound as a whole, but yes, it's only a certain amount of people. But we do a lot of things for a certain amount of people in Mound.
And I love what Sherry does, but I'm just saying, what, where do you draw the line? You know, we have lots of bays that touch Mound.
Well, I think you open it to all of them.
This is her volunteering her own time to get this going.
I understand that, and we appreciate all the volunteer work you do.
But that's the thing, like, if we don't have someone like her to set this up, it doesn't exist. And that's why I said, go for it.
And it's not just me. It's a board, our whole board, right?
So, I've got a lot of questions, but obviously, tonight might not be the forum to address those.
Yeah, and I don't know, did you check on a work session or something? Is there another forum where more information could be given?
Yeah, I think that would be another route, too, is if the council would.
Or if you wanted us to come back for another? I know we're not on the agenda.
Technically, this is a three-minute thing that went to 30, so.
Or just give us the links for any information that you think would be beneficial for us to.
And the other thing is Kathleen Metzger from the DNR. She would be a great resource, and I can send you that, too, to help you understand these conservation districts.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Cool, well, thanks for coming on.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to come up for three minutes? Okay, I'm gonna bring up Orono, please, here. Go ahead. Somehow, you're never on our agenda.
And when you are on the agenda, you're not here.
That, too.
So, it's always good to see you.
Do you come, you try to come every time? And then if there's a, because I think we usually did it once a month way back when.
Every other meeting, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't have clarification, and then Cory and Tony, our chief and deputy chief, kind of instructed me to be.
Okay, I think we said that because there's a few that we got missed.
Yes.
And so, we're like, okay, gotta stop missing.
And the only reason they miss is it's a call.
Yeah, you're doing something more important, right?
Usually, the men and women out there can handle it, but if there's something that has to be out there, so.
Well, let's put him on the agenda every time and then right after all the comments, so we can be more official.
If I'm not here, I'll have one of my officers to.
Yeah. And if something comes up, I know you've emailed me before.
Yeah.
And we can just.
And I can always send you my notes.
Okay, anyway, well, thank you for coming.
Yes, thanks for having me. So, nothing much to report this month, well, within the last two weeks since I've been here. I had my staff run the numbers. There were 65 calls in January so far. Cold weather's definitely around. People aren't moving, but that doesn't mean things aren't going on. My staff or my officers and other officers are constantly doing spot checking right now, and they're doing house checks, and they're doing a lot of proactivity out there. They're not sitting idly. They get out, they walk around as much as they can. We are, the biggest thing right now, we're doing house. We have a lot of house checks. And if you guys aren't familiar with those, that's a service available to our cities where you go on the owner website, fill out a form. If you're leaving town for a set amount of days or a month, or you're leaving for the winter, you fill it out, give us the information, and then we go out, maybe get a check a week or two checks a week or one check every couple weeks. Well, you know, as often as we can, we hit those. We have an app that we make sure we're checking and stuff.
Sure.
Us supervisors, we're checking and making sure that they're getting done. There's no houses missed and stuff. So, it's kind of free service. Our service provides that. We want to make sure people are aware of, so. Other than that, we had the polar plunge on Saturday.
Yeah.
We did have a good turnout. Our Orono team raised $3,926. It was, it sounded like it was a good time, and everyone did well, so.
They were hurdy jumpers.
Yeah, it was cold.
Windy, windy, yeah.
They did a good job.
So, luckily, I was a nice shift officer, I got out of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, where were you?
But one other thing to remind, I wanted to remind, too, is I just got a DCA alert from my investigators, too, that there's a, kind of a rash of windows being broke out at events. So, like, we, I think we had one up in Orono, a hockey arena, where somebody came through and started knocking out windows to grab valuables, so. And that happens at our dog parks, Susan Luton Park. We have to remind people, take your valuables with you. They will, even if you hide them, they'll still wreck the window to get, to check the car. So, try to remind everybody, just be very cognizant of that. And if you're going into one of these events, know it's a target, and we try to, you know, watch as much as possible, but take your stuff. That way, you know, you're out a window and not a laptop and a purse and credit cards and stuff like that, so. And then, Cory, I want to remind you, I think he sent you an email regarding the e-bike. They're gonna be like an e-bike conference with West Three Rivers Park District. They're gonna put on kind of a whole rundown of the e-bike situation, so. Just wanted to remind you guys of that.
All right, does council have any questions? No, thanks for coming on.
I've gotten two comments. One, I've used Metro Mobility, and this, last week, I used Transit Services, which is a subcontractor of theirs, but their cars are labeled. And the driver was stopped for going too slow. And he was a little unnerved about it. He was trying to find the address. And he said, why would they stop me? And he said, the officer kept saying, are you drunk? And he said, no. And then he said, well, do you have, have you taken medicine? So, the officer was fairly persistent, took his license, went back, and then came back and gave it to him and sent him off, but he was.
Is that in our area?
Uh huh. Because I live right over by the library, kind of, in Methodist Church, Tagawood. And also, I got an email from someone who said they're concerned about all the police sirens. Now, my theory on the police sirens is that it's minestrata and that they use the sirens to run through Mound, because I always hear them end when they get down to three points, you know? But is there increased siren activity from you guys?
Well, we're governed by the laws. You know, like, if we do have a, like, a call that requires us to be there quickly, we will use lights and sirens. It is discretion of the officers to use them. Everyone's different. Daytimes are different from the night times, so. I used to be a Mound officer, so I could get anywhere in the city in three minutes, so lights and sirens were never usually an issue for me. So, I usually vowed not, or vowed not to use them, so. But usually during the daytime, when there's traffic, you're gonna hear sirens, because we gotta move people out of the way and let them know we're coming to get to a call. It could be a medical, it could be, you know, domestic. It could be something that the officers need to be there now and get there as quick as possible, so. But I don't think you're gonna hear many at night, because my guys don't tend to use them unless there's something pretty serious going on, so.
All right. Thank you.
And I will look into that incident, see what happened there and get the story, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again.
Have a good night.
All right, number six, we got hearings on liquor compliance. Are you taking that, Kevin, or?
You can take it.
Scott?
You can. I'll chime in when needed.
Hello, council, Kevin Kelly, city clerk. Kind of self-explanatory, we've had a couple of alcohol compliance check failures. What happened on October 13th? Orono PD does checks twice a year through all of the liquor licensees in the city. Kind of gone through this, unfortunately, in last year as well. So, one of the establishments in town, Casa Amigos Restaurant, has had their third violation within a three-year period of time. It's actually, they've been in business, been in operation since January of 2023, so. The violations go in three-year cycles, and they've actually had three now in their two years of operation. And Aruma Restaurant on Wilshire Boulevard, they had their first failure in three and a half years of operation, so. So, with each violation, the penalties and the fees increase for those violations. So, the minimal fee for a first violation in a three-year period is a one-day suspension of the liquor license, as well as a fine of $500 minimum, so. And then for Casa Amigos, for their third violation within the three-year period, they have a $200,000 minimum penalty and then a seven-day suspension of the license, so. I'll just let you know that Casa Amigos has paid the $2,000 fee already, so just so you know that, so. There was a typo or a mistake in the agenda on page 247. It's a seven-day suspension of the license for Casa Amigos, so. So, we do have both of the.
So, you take a look at the decision section on the resolution on 247.
Take a look at the decision section on the resolution on two forty-seven. The last sentence says, for a three-day period should, it should be a seven-day period. It should be corrected in the final version.
Maybe we're not there yet, or we are, but don't those seven days, isn't that seven-day period have to be decided upon?
No, we have it set up so that the police chief will make that decision. So the city still makes that determination, but it just.
I remember reading that now, sorry. Thanks.
Yeah, the last violations, we kind of negotiated with the two, there was Carboni's and Casa Amigos last year. And this year, we just felt that we should just allow the Orno PD to set, you know, the time, the, the suspension dates that works best for them, so. So both, both, pardon, both restaurants, their ownership are here. If you wanted to speak to them or do you have any other questions for me?
Does council have any questions for Kevin?
Well, no, not a question, of this information for the council. If you're starting on page two fifty, notices were provided to both establishments indicating that if they wanted to have a hearing to challenge the violation, they had to notify the city in writing by a date certain. That wasn't done and so the, it's considered, the violation is considered uncontested and so the purpose here is, is for the, is for the termination of the penalty.
Alright, thanks Kevin.
Yep, thank you.
Is it Mr. Ortiz? You wanna come up? Is it Luis? Is it Luis?
Luis.
Do I remember that? Yeah, I remember you had the ribbon cutting.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah.
Anyways, yeah, my name is Luis Ortiz. I'm the owner of the Casa Amigos Mexican Restaurant. And I mean, I just wanted to say I'm sorry and apologize for what happened. This is what happened when you have so many restaurants, you know, to run, so. And I don't know if any of you guys are on the restaurant business or been on the restaurant business before, so. I wanted to know, I would like to know, you know, if you guys understand how restaurant business run.
I don't, but I come to your place a lot.
So anyways, so, and another question that I have, like what the city do to educate, like educate employees?
Our employees or your employees?
My employees. Each, each city have their own, their own, like they give class, you know, before for at least once a year, you know, and I don't hear anything yet from, from, from here, you know.
Last time we had, I think it was your manager in here?
Yeah.
Can't remember her name, but. And I, and I think she said specifically to me too, cause she's like, I don't care if, if you look like me, in other words, my age, whatever I, however old I am. Or you or you, you know, she kind of pointed at a few of us. She's like, we will card everybody, right? Now, I know specifically, cause I've gone in there multiple times, I don't ever get carded and that's after that. And she says she's gonna card a hundred-year-old people.
I would like to know if you guys been on the restaurant before, you know, you don't get offended, but a lot of people get offended, you know?
Well, that's not your, I mean, you still got a card. I mean, you're not gonna have a liquor license, so that's the problem. I mean, we want you to stay. I love your food, man.
Yeah, that's another, yes, that's another thing, you know, also you guys as a city, I mean, I would love to stay too, you know?
Yeah.
And just so you know, four violations in a three-year period is revocation. Mandatory revocation.
Like you gotta card everybody. Like I don't care what they look like, if they're breathing, you gotta card them going forward. I mean.
I'm flattered when you ask me for identification.
And, and just blame us. Say, hey, you know, we, we, I'm just sorry, it's a city thing. And then the other thing too is when you card, makes you actually, makes you actually read it too. That's I've heard in our, some of our past issues that, you know, they'll, they'll look at it, but they won't see the actual date or they won't do the math and it's like, I think through the state, you can get these things that you put out your registers and say, you know, if it's this date or, you know, I think there's like the digital versions of them too. But we want you to stay here and I know if you don't have a liquor license, it's gonna be tough, you know, you know, if, if you fail another time. And at, at the end of the day, I mean, there's nothing we're gonna, you know, we're not gonna, it's gonna be game over next time, so.
No, I, I get it. You don't like, like I said, I would like to stay too, you know. I'm building my other restaurant, by the way, so.
Yeah. Where? Where at?
St. Michael Albertville.
Oh, yeah.
I guess I'd like to offer a few to answer Mr. Ortiz's question. So I'm in a similar industry to yours and you can do, like the city doesn't provide help directly, but if you go, I don't know if you guys are MLBA members, Minnesota Licensed Beverage, it's like three hundred bucks a year and they'll provide an in-person or online training for all your staff and you print the certificate. And, you know, like we make our employees watch them every year, again and again. And you can get like an insurance break too for having that completed if you submit that, but it does make every employee go through it. But what's better than that, like you were saying, the calendars, you know, your beer vendors will give you those for free, you know, born on or before this date, but for less than the cost of a fine, you can purchase, I don't know who, like who your point of sale or software.
We upgrade the POC system, where you can run the ID.
Yeah, they have handheld ones too where you can do the same thing. And I mean, you, like you said, you gotta card everybody and it will just pop up red, you know, like.
Yeah, I give you the, the ID.
Yeah, so I don't know, it's a, if you buy a couple of those, I mean, that goes a long way too and it's just.
No, that's what I was asking you, you know, have you guys been on the business before? So you guys, like you go through so many people.
His is very similar. He goes through a lot of people.
It's hard to keep up, you know, like, and you own multiple businesses, so it's hard for you to be in one restaurant and, and, I mean.
You gotta rely on your staff.
I worry to pay my bills, I worry to pay my mortgage, I worry to pay the rent, you know, and yeah, you keep that up to the manager, but yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I would see if your point of sale can't do that. I mean, there's somewhere where you type in the birth date or scan the ID and it just say, no. You know, it's just, even if they're ninety-five years old.
Don't you have like a job aid of like what to look for and like?
Yeah, that too. MLBA is, three hundred bucks, very well spent.
I gotta think the state has some, is that the state?
Uh, no, it's private, but I mean, it's, it's pretty inexpensive for the materials that they give you and provide, like printed materials for your register and, you know, all that stuff. But there's ways to, like every time someone orders a drink, it has to get put through that. You have to take their ID and it takes more time, but it's bulletproof. And we, we use it every day and turn people down almost daily, but it's effective. I don't know what it's called, but there's a few different machines that will, that will do that.
That, I like that idea too, because it kind of alleviates you from the guilt of feeling like you're offending somebody. It just is a task that has to be done every day and, and it kind of takes the ownership off you and puts it back on.
No, I understand, yeah.
So this isn't exactly totally similar, but when we were doing Spirit of the Lakes, right? I got a whole bunch of.
Like banners?
Yeah, the banners, right. And, you know, the board, Spirit of the Lakes board is like, hey, you know, you gotta handle, but you gotta, you know, you gotta do it. So they have a little job aid thing and say what to look for and stuff, but, you know, I wasn't like trained to do it, but. And I did it for every single one and they're like, what, what do you mean? I'm seventy-five years old. And I'm like, just humor me and give me your ID. Ah, you know, make a fun thing about it, so. Yeah, I.
It's for your protection.
Yeah, we want you to stay here, so we don't want to see, see you back.
Can we provide some of these instructions or helpful hints?
Jesse, can you?
When they get their liquor license from the city? Like there's, these things are available for you to help protect your license?
I mean, I guess, I don't know, then we gotta do it for everybody, you know, it's like.
Well, and it's only the initial contact, so I mean, but still, I mean, if he had been aware of that, maybe he would have leveraged this MLB.
No, I mean, no, I, I've been on the business for.
And you got, you have a lot of locations.
Yeah, every city have like training, at least quarterly, Maple Grove, El River, even Becker. Three, four thousand people, you know, they have classes every quarterly.
But with all due respect, it, it's really your job to have your employees understand what's, you know, it's not cities.
We rotate people every, over, other month, you know, so.
Do you still have a manager that kind of runs that location?
This location?
Yeah.
No, she's.
So I haven't seen her for a while.
Three months ago.
Okay, so, so are you kind of stepping in or your wife or, okay. Again, I, whatever your chain of command is, you gotta, you just gotta figure that out and, you know, if, if even if someone leaves, you know, how are you gonna solve the problem when, when the next person comes in? Again, this is your livelihood, right? But if, you know, you gotta.
Make it happen. I think the ID swipers are less than five hundred bucks. The handheld ones and the ones that can go onto your monitor, they're like, for like two hundred bucks.
Well, I don't own a business in that area, but I would recommend putting, posting a sign right on the door that says, we ID everyone.
I think.
And that, I think you can get those. Do you have it? But then I think it's also, to your point, it's also requiring your employees to card everyone. Anyone that orders a drink, you have to provide that identification. You know, and even if it's just a step of requiring them to mark down the date of birth on the ticket so that you have a record of it if someone ever comes in and says, well, you didn't card me, you know, you can say, oh yeah, I did on, when did you come in?
That word spreads really fast amongst the kids when there's no.
Chance, yeah.
Well, remember, this is, this is a sting, right?
I understand.
Right, right.
And, and they are minors too.
But what I'm saying is, you have minor, you know what it is? You know, the kids all find out, you know, oh wow, they're not, even kids and, kids in mound aren't going there, cause they'd get caught. But kids in Wazada might go, hey, if you go over to mound, they don't card at Casa Amigo. You know, kids talk. So again, nobody wants to see you go and so, you know, responsibility to protect yourself, we all want you to do that.
I empathize though. I mean, like the training and the turnover, it's a lot of work and you give someone the training and mistakes can be made, but I would definitely call up the, the MLBA and they're really, really quick and really helpful. It's pretty inexpensive.
Does the employee gets fined as well, correct?
Yeah, they give between.
Yeah, they have to go to court.
Two and three thousand dollar fine, so it's not, yeah.
Okay.
It's got your record, you know.
I will second.
It goes on the record.
You know, it's like, go to your record, you gotta go to court, you gotta pay at least three thousand dollars and they're like kids, so.
It's tough.
The whole business is tough, which makes us appreciate you and your good product even more, so. Yeah, I wish I could empathize with you. I just understand it's hard enough to even keep employees these days.
Yep.
Yeah, second Jason's comments. I want you to stay.
How many years have to stay clean?
What's the deadline for this last one? I mean, not that we're trying to just get you one more year, but.
Well, basically, it's, it's a, it's a, well, stay, stay clean until you're done, out of business. But it's, but it's a three-year period, so you start from, yeah, you start from the first violation. And so basically it's, those violations are, are gonna sit there and it's like a, this window, three-year window keeps moving and so it's possible that you could get to where that first one was gone, but now you still have two sitting there and then it's another third violation.
So it's not fourth violation?
It's not three now.
No, no, it's fourth violation in a.
In three years.
In a three-year period, so from the first violation he has, then you start counting them and if it's a fourth violation, then it's a revocation. But the, the window is always gonna be.
Sure.
So you gotta be really careful for the next, well, heavens.
Yeah.
Alright, well, thanks.
Thank you guys.
Good luck to you and thanks for your business and great food.
We won't see you here, but we'll see you there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so on page two forty-six, we have a, a resolution if someone wants to make a motion for that.
Don't we need to change the date of the decision?
Yeah, and change the date.
And this is just for Casa Amigos. Uh, if there's just the one change, I can do that. I'd like to make a motion, a resolution.
Make a motion, make a motion to, for a resolution.
I'd like to make a motion for a resolution, making findings, conclusion and decision regarding liquor license suspension and imposing civil penalty on Casa Amigos Mexican Restaurant with the correction of seven days from three days on page two forty-seven.
Okay, got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
What's the fine? The civil penalty?
It's already paid, it's two thousand.
It'll be, it'll be filled in two thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Alright, that passes. Okay, next up, we got Duruma Restaurant. Do you want to, oh, you already said that. Okay, so I'll just have her come over.
Yeah, Ying can come forward.
Okay. How are you? Can you give us your name and address, please?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ying Alvarez. I'm the owner of Duruma Restaurant. I feel ashamed that happened. I mean, I've been server for like twenty years, so I've been very alert about this issue. Unfortunately, that day, the guy went inside my restaurant. If you ever been to my restaurant, you know that, a sushi bar and a bar at one part. And then they asked the sushi chef for the drink, not my server. My servers are highly alert about this and they, all of my server called everyone. And then they, even they got offended and I know they are regular customer, they look, we check ID before, we know them, she still continued to do that, but. And then he, my sushi chef asked for ID. He know that he looked young, however, he didn't do the math.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, so yeah, I know that this not going to happen again. I have a calendar at a bar area for the date and I write the year, so that has to be matching the ID when they check. Yeah, but unfortunately that, I don't know what happened that day. He was just not thinking, couldn't do the math, but it happened, so. Yeah.
Does council have any questions?
Well, another great restaurant, you know, we feel terrible you're in this position and.
Yeah, it can happen to your best employee too. I mean, I would just say like, put that policy in place if you can make them type in a date or something, I don't know.
Well, yeah, with our restaurant, like I know, like before the big restaurant I worked, you always entered the item before you serve. But sometimes we do like bars right there and I usually, like if customer asks me, I would ask him to pass me after, if I ask him. But that day, server was busy with other customers and, and he just, he just did it. Which was not happening often, that he serve alcohol to the customer. Unless like regular customers, if you can find the sushi bar, they know them, he talks to them, so, yeah. But I, I think I heard you just suggest that put a sign that we card every, everyone by the door. I think that's a good idea.
That helps, but remember, we're still gonna bring a minor in there, try to get you to serve them, just to check.
Yeah.
Right, so, even if they see that, they're not, they don't matter for that, but it matters for all the people, I guess.
It needs to be constantly reminded, like I will talk to everyone that could recheck or for there. Hey, remember what happened. Just check ID.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm gonna do, just be on, on their back all the time.
Now, is it ginger salad?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I was just, we were just talking about that. We're, are you hungry? Well, she had a ginger drink in the, in the break room here and, and I said, oh, have you ever had the ginger salad over there? And I don't know, have you had it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and she, she really likes ginger, so. I like the onion soup.
Yeah, okay.
You don't eat out much, right?
Katie texted me and she's like, hey, do you want Duruma tonight? I was like, yeah, but I'm going to council, so.
Yeah, I remember your name and that, I'll order.
Alright, well, again, thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thank you. It won't happen again.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so page two forty-eight, we got this one and, so this is a, what's the fine on this one? Five hundred dollars?
First one, yeah.
And then a one-day suspension because it's their first one, okay. So someone wants to do the resolution, make a motion?
Resolution making findings.
Make a motion for a resolution.
Oh, I make a motion, motion for a resolution. The conclusion and decision regarding, I have to read every word. I make a resolution making findings, conclusion and decision regarding liquor license suspension and imposing civil penalty on Duruma Restaurant.
Does that work? Okay. Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Alright, that passes. Okay, now we got number seven, plans and specification, authorization and Lost Lake Commons improvements, phase two. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brian Simmons of Polton Lake, Senior City Engineer. What you have in front of you in the council packet tonight is phase two of the artist formerly known as the Harbor District Park. We're striking that from our memories. Now it's Lost Lake Commons. We are asking for permission to prepare plans and specs, which is the first step in moving towards bidding and awarding something. Uh, and this is phase two. So the important elements are, you know, we, we constructed the foundation for the, this, this new park last fall. Uh, and these are some of the feature pieces, some of the lighting, uh, some of the concrete paving for the plaza, seating and the fire pit. And we are getting started on this now because we are intending to have a little bit more communications and a little bit more collaboration. Some of these things are gonna go through or to Parks Commission, so that we can make sure that we get feedback from all of the interested parties, cause lots of people are excited about this and wanna have some say in what this looks like and while we have some landscape architects that are very good at this, Matt and I are just engineers, so we'll make sure we get the right creative people in the right creative places.
Say just engineers.
Yeah, just, I'll say it. It's okay. It's okay. Engineer with a little E. Uh, this project is included in the capital improvement plan. It is included in the long-term financial plan. Uh, and the preliminary budget for this phase is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is the number that is in the long-term financial plan.
I have a couple of questions on that.
Fire away.
So I should remember this too, like planning and are, so the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be the bid that covers all five bullet points?
That's the total project cost, so that should include paying us and paying the contractor. So that should include paying us and paying the contractor.
So on page two fifty-four, like, the, the, the bid would include those five bullet points?
Yep.
And then they all get reviewed, approved, bid on separately within that umbrella?
I, I think we're planning to bid most of them together as one project.
Okay.
Or, or at least, you know, if there's something in there that.
Unique things in there. I was just wondering how that might work.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I think those are the details that we need to work out.
Okay.
During the preparation of plans and specs, so if, if something, you know, arises, that it makes sense for us to come back and say, we're gonna split this out, or, you know, some sort of partnership or something, you know, I, I don't foresee anything like that happening right now, but if it did, we would come back to you all with a, you know, we're gonna bid this separately.
So we're, we'd be approving the bid for all tonight, knowing that they could happen?
Not approving any bid.
We're not approving.
Authorizing the preparation of plans and specs. You're just, you're just telling me to get started.
Yeah, and then knowing that they could happen independent of one another, I guess. Okay.
Yes. I was sort of done anyway, so are there, are there any other questions? There is a, Jesse, would you?
I have, I have just an off question that you might be, not be able to answer, but Jesse, you might. So with the fire pits? Um, you know, like, who's gonna clean those? Do, do we bring our own wood, or they gas? I, I just don't know anything about the fire pits. I knew they were gonna be installed. I just would like to know more about.
Yeah, the last time we talked about this, I don't think we had determined yet how they would be ignited. I, I mean, I sort of assumed off the bat, gas made sense, but I mean, that's assuming availability, 'cause then there would be no cleaning required, so I don't know.
It could go either way, 'cause like Excelsior has gas, and then I think in, in Wayzetta, I think there would.
Mm-hmm. I'm just wondering if, what, what, what our plan was, and if there would, who's gonna clean them?
It's a question that's been asked a lot, 'cause I've had a lot of people ask me, and I.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it's a great question, and I don't have an answer for you yet. I think that's what you are asking us to get to the bottom of with the resolution that's attached to this for tonight. So we know, we know where we want it to go from the park master plan, uh, but those are, those are details that we should get to the bottom of before we bid a project. Helpful to know that that is a hot button issue.
Do you have the little pointer thing? Cat toy, cat toy.
Scott?
Can you just point, or maybe even Jesse zoom in a little bit? 'Cause I know this has three on here as well. Just go through each of these, what, what are we doing on phase two specifically? So like, I can see on the top left, we're doing that plaza area, right?
Yep, and we left all of the lighting throughout the entire park out from previous phases.
Right, so there is no lighting now?
Correct.
Yep, and then, so phase one, you can see that walkway is already there.
The promenade is there, that's phase one.
So this'll just tie in. It will be similar material walkway. It looks like it's almost.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then, again, assuming we, that's a fire pit, assuming we, you know, go with this and then bid it out and then get it done, I mean, we're talking end of the year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this would be our new Santa stage or whatever.
There's a, there's a potential that some things would be finished in the spring. You, you know, like.
Right.
I always sort of reserve that for our utility projects, right, is that we like to give contractors as much runway as possible, because then we get better bids. But then, you know, if we've got a contractor that's wrapping up an excavation project in the fall, then it rolls over into the spring to make sure that turf is established, and turf real important here.
Sure.
For sure.
Well, any part of phase two would impact the farmer's market. We're, we're pretty clear there.
Well, I think we did a pretty good job of coordinating with that this fall.
Yeah, you did.
So I, I think we're gonna continue to.
You should be pretty good, right? 'Cause you're not gonna need to store equipment over there or anything.
Well, I mean, they will have some equipment for this.
They'll come and go.
Yeah, but, but again, you know, we'll, we'll coordinate.
They got it in a trailer.
Yeah.
Their equipment.
But we will coordinate again.
So that phase three, that's, that's just a cover, right? Like a shelter?
That's, the phase three is the, is the shelter.
Okay, so that won't be there.
Correct.
But, so phase two, we're gonna do that whole concrete deal, and then whatever type of fire. And just a thought on the fire thing, um, from my head, um, electric, or, you know, gas or whatever?
Yeah.
That'd be fine, but like, who gets to push the button, and is it locked when, you know, the kids is coming up, you know, I don't know.
It'd like be set to be like only active at certain times of the day, like, if someone tried to start it after nine P M., it just.
It just doesn't work, yeah.
And then they also, like in Excelsior, they have a timer, like, it's like, it just runs for half an hour.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
My, my very recent experience, the outdoor ones at the outdoor ice rink in St. Louis Park are locked and required to be lit by a city employee.
Right.
Yeah.
That's my point, is like, but then it's like, then nobody ever uses it, because it's only during certain festivals or, but I could see, well, I, I guess, per our code, it has to be three by three or whatever, right? We can't cheat our own code, I guess.
Well, I, I get worried about abuse.
Abuse?
That's what, I mean, they're, it's gonna be beautiful, but, you know, that's my worry. So I wanna be reassured that there'll be some, something in place that will keep kids safe, or, you know, keep us from going broke for paying gas for twenty-four-seven camp outs, or, you know.
Do we have cameras installation anywhere in the area?
I don't think so.
That might be something to consider. They're relatively cheap nowadays. At least give maybe the morning police the ability to look at it.
We, we did, the skate park has it.
Yeah.
Well, and, so are you gonna, when we say go ahead, are you kinda thinking with the Parks Commission, be like, here's a gas, here's, and then hopefully they'll make a new decision for us?
I, I think there's some pieces of this that we end up workshopping.
Okay, with them?
Yep, with them, and, and even maybe bring it to you and having some more collaborative discussions about, I, I think this of all things is going to require engagement from key parties. And that, that includes everyone sitting up there. Well, maybe except for Scott, he doesn't care, but.
And I actually did get questions from some of the new.
I care.
Atesta residents. They seem to have some concerns about if it was wood or, or gas.
And do they want one of those?
You know, they didn't really express, and I, what I wasn't sure is if they were concerned about if it's wood, if the timbers would fly over and, and, you know.
Or if the ashes would blow towards their building?
That kind of thing. I mean, we're all sensitive to it these days.
Which was happening during the Christmas event. That was, it was pretty windy that night.
Right.
So, but the fire department was on hand and, you know.
Sure. Okay, so then going down here, um, so, well, here, I guess we're at the bottom. So what is this phase two little grid thing there?
Oh, dang it. I knew I was gonna do that. I knew I was gonna do that, too.
Memorial pavers.
Memorial pavers?
Yeah, relocation of the ones that I'm sure were.
Okay, well, and I think maybe we gotta talk about that.
We're not gonna do those.
No, we're not redoing, we're not doing them. 'Cause they're all terrible.
Yeah.
They're all just.
The maintenance on them is just terrible.
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to recover those. So what would we do there, then?
Uh, if we're not relocating the memorial pavers, I would suggest that we probably need to find some way to honor, you know, the intent behind the memorial pavers.
Plaque or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and then, um, that could be more, you know, stamped concrete.
Oh, you do that in the concrete?
That, that could be something, too. That's.
I've seen the list of these old.
There's quite a few.
Yeah.
It's, I think you'd have to do one master thing.
Like a plaque.
Yeah, plaque saying, you know, and maybe it's in the grass saying, you know, on a pole, right, saying that we honor, but.
The original donators.
We've seen, I've seen the original lists, and we're not confident that we have all the, all the lists and all the people, and.
It must be long. There's a lot of pavers.
I've seen it, but it's, and again, you can't go and say, okay, that person checked, that, yeah, I see it there, 'cause you can't see half of them. So, but anyway, so if, if we do like a memorial thing, plaque, nice plaque, then what goes, just concrete there, then, or?
Concrete to match the, the stamped concrete on that side.
Yep, I would, I would continue the.
We actually have all the pavers that you could save, right?
You.
I don't think we've removed them yet.
Oh, okay.
May, maybe we, yeah.
You know, maybe the families may wanna come and get theirs.
I mean, they can come and get them, but it's not gonna work to put them back in.
Well, I know that, but, you know, but.
Pavers in Salt, pavers in Salt, Minnesota, Dalton, especially the dry cast pavers. We've learned that lesson the hard way.
We've learned the hard way about pavers in Minnesota.
Yes.
Okay, so then, what are those little blue things? Seating?
Yep, and that would be part of phase two.
Okay, and what, what kinda, what kinda chairs are those, or, oh, is it like picnic tables?
To, to be determined.
Okay, just, just some kinda seating. It looks like four people could sit at a table maybe, or, is that what that?
I, I think those are. The symbol that's used up there right now are those like cast-in-place picnic tables.
Oh, sure, okay.
So like a, like a metal fixture that's cast into concrete.
Oh.
But that, that, again, does not mean that that is, you know, what necessarily is going in here.
Right.
This is just what, what was in the concept plan for now, and I think these are all things that we need to figure out together.
And this hole where it says phase two right above that circle?
Right here?
Yeah, that would all be, that's all the other pavers and stuff, too, right?
That means this, yeah, this walkway.
That whole walkway, 'cause that's pretty rough.
That thing has been a thorn in my side for years.
Right.
That, when, when it was still Auditor's Road, right near there, right, the paving company came out and paid to replace it once, and then it promptly failed.
Okay, so as long as we're using the same concrete type of people that we used before, 'cause that other concrete is phenomenal, the walkway.
Yeah.
I know, we love it. We love it.
Very nice. And then I would, you know, kinda do the same thing. So, um, what else, we're doing?
So the former, former Rotunda Performance Area is phase three.
We're not doing that.
Not included here.
So that'll be wood still, or, or is grass and then partly wood?
No, it's grass.
This, this grass pave can, over here, is to accommodate fire trucks.
Oh, okay.
So that they can, they can get driving access in there, or, uh, you know, parks and utility vehicles.
Is that like a special type of grass, or?
Uh, it's a, it's a special type of mesh that we let grass grow through, but you can drive on it.
Okay.
I rattle off grass pave like you all should know what it is. You shouldn't, but it's a thing we use, that you plant grass and it grows up through it.
Yeah.
And then all those trees on the whole left side, is that phase two?
Uh, that I don't know off the top of my head.
All the darker green ones?
Where?
Like all those trees, 'cause I know Artesa doesn't have trees yet.
I don't know exactly how many trees we have bid for phase two. I think.
Doesn't specify phase one.
I think, no.
That might be three?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we need the hammocks.
Well, that's, the hammocks are phase two.
We're putting the hammocks on posts.
Yeah.
They're getting their own posts, not trees.
They're on posts, good.
And that is included in phase two, along the art walk, going up this way.
So where are we sourcing the artwork from? Is that a contest we're gonna do, or is it funded by us?
I think, I think it's something we should do as a contest, solicit local artists, or maybe even rotate, you know. That's where, if we had a coordinator, they could do things with school kids and rotate.
So has anyone been to the Artory in Hopkins? Are you, have you, familiar with this?
Like the center?
Uh, no, there, there's a, Eighth Street in Hopkins is, has been turned into a one-way. It's a two-way street.
On Eighth Street? Okay.
It was a project that, um, our Bolton Mank Landscape Architecture Division partnered on with the city of Hopkins, and they engaged a bunch of local artists. Uh, and they gave them, you know, that's right where the Minneapolis Moline Factory used to be.
Oh, oh, that new apartment building.
Yeah, so that apartment building was put up, called the Moline, and there is a little mini museum there, but they, they use that theme. It's sort of stuck with the mini Moline. So there's like a picnic shelter that looks like a big round tractor seat, but it's like eighteen feet across, and there's a number of art installations along there that were from local artists. Maybe just a little less intense for us, because that was a significant expense for the city. A lot of those artworks were commissioned, but I, I think we can key off of some of the lessons learned there.
We could go to state arts board and get a grant, community grant.
Yeah. Yeah, and.
Do you envision the art being permanent, or?
Yeah.
Permanent?
I, I think if we don't want it to be vandalized or walk away, I think it has to be permanent.
I, I'm just trying to grasp the concept. When you were talking about the Hopkins, which I wanna go to, that sounds cool. When you were talking about school kids, I, I was going with, is it gonna be transitory or permanent?
Yeah, in some communities where I've worked, um, they've done rotating projects with school kids, and so they don't stay for very long. But, you know, like you said, if it's not permanent, there is a tendency, things walk away.
Well, so, maybe a little tongue-in-cheek of me to say that, because I, I have seen installations where like, uh, a three or a four-sided pillar, that is literally just a, a lockable cabinet that, you know, a third-grade class over here at Shirley Hills could make a poster, and somebody from the city could lock it inside, and then it's behind glass, and we could rotate that out, that kind of thing. That could be part of that art walk, so we could, we could, you know, do that community engagement with not permanent artwork, but in a permanent installation, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So there, again, I'm just an engineer. There are lots of, there are lots of ways that, and that, that's why I, I don't, that's why we have, you know, Joel and the landscape architects that have worked on this, and the, the concept plan from, you know, HKGI and Rita and company that we have keyed off of to get here, you know, that was out on a table during the comp plan process. I don't think that was the last time necessarily we wanna get public input. I think that process is going to continue, and I think, um, together at some point during this design, we're gonna wanna have some level of public input or public solicitation, whether that is, you know, something on, um, you know, Instagram, or using some of the social media, or if we go even more intense with some sort of an open house, or a, you know, a tent at Spirit of the Lakes. I think there's lots of ideas in my head, uh, but I know that we need to get started on this.
A lot of that's, yeah, we're gonna be halfway done by then.
Well.
Yeah.
Phase two.
Yeah, I guess Spirit of the Lakes, yeah, that's a little late for this, but.
So in, in your list, it does say finalize landscaping generally around the perimeter of the park.
Mm-hmm.
So I would assume in all the bushes and trees is included in phase two? Is that what that means?
Again, I don't know exactly how many trees are included in that estimate for phase two, 'cause a lot, a lot of time we'll do the trees afterwards, but we'll do the landscaping beds. So we'll plant, you know, shrubs.
Oh, okay.
That, that we expect to grow, and then sometimes we'll put in trees afterwards. I should probably get back to you on exactly how many trees are included.
You know, when our, when our commissioner from Three Rivers came last year, she kind of indicated that we might be able to get some trees from them.
Okay.
So.
One other thing about the art installations.
They have a nursery, and so, yeah.
One other thing about the art installations i- is that, uh, that doesn't necessarily need to be figured out, you know, if, if we are gonna try and engage and bring in some community. We can provide spaces for those things, you know, we can say we're doing a four-by-four pad at every one of those.
That could be like literally the last piece?
Well, I mean, the placement of the piece of art there could be pending, you know.
Part of the ceremony or something. But would we be commissioning someone to, or is the city paying to have this artwork done?
That, that I think is part of what we need to figure out.
That part of this eight hundred and fifty thousand estimate?
No.
No.
No, there's, there is not a budget in there for, you know, commissioning elaborate artworks. That is to get us to a place to put the piece of art.
So we're gonna have hammock posts?
Yep.
How many of those?
Uh, I wanna see.
Two, three, four, five?
Yeah, I, I thought there was six.
Is that what that red star thing is?
No, those are the art installations.
The art.
That's the art, and then these are the hammock posts, and then a couple of them are like twosies, so you can hammock with your friend.
Right. Well, it'd be nice to have some.
Your own hammock?
Yeah.
It'd be nice if you had a tree over your hammock, at least starting. Well, I mean, just, yeah, there's just gonna be a post in the middle nowhere.
Yeah, I, I agree.
So I think we should have at least that part of the tree budget.
We also don't wanna put the tree in until the hammock post is cemented in the ground, right? Order of operations.
Right.
We don't wanna destroy the roots from the tree.
Right.
Right, so, think about that.
Did we get public engagement on, did they, public ask for hammock hooks? They did?
Have you ever been to one?
Why a hammock at home? I don't go traveling around hanging a hammock.
Okay, if you, if you go to, if you go to South Minneapolis, to the Rose Garden, above the Rose Garden on the hill, it's a hammock garden. And, and the afternoon, people come with their hammocks and they hang them up, and it's like a little community. It's like a pop-up community.
The south end of Bede McCoska is like that, too.
Yeah, that's right.
Mm-hmm, out, out front of the, the block.
Balance on there.
Yeah. So this water quality basin, are we putting any kinda structure around it to prevent someone from falling into it?
Uh, it should not have standing water in it, it should be a, like a rain garden-y type of, we're filtrating water.
All right, but how deep is it typically, do you know?
Uh, you know, usually they're gre- they're a green depression.
Okay.
So, so people aren't gonna want to voluntarily walk through there, but if you, you know, you kick your soccer ball in there or something, or it's dark and somebody stumbles through there, you know, you shouldn't be splashing through water.
Okay.
It should have drained through, that's the quality part, hopefully.
So really Phase Three is just that, that cover on the top and then the thing on the bottom?
The shelter and the performance space.
That's really the main, the last part. So Phase Two, we're gonna have a pretty good completed park if we get trees in there.
Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars should take us quite a ways.
Okay.
What about the farmer's market? What phases that isn't noted here?
I think that was the plaza on the very upper.
Yeah.
Left was just for like farmer's market overflow if needed.
Into the plaza, this would be overflow for the farmer's market if needed.
Well, because it says farmer's market future phase, that's why I'm confused.
Well, there, at one point, weren't you gonna put like a canopy over that parking area? I'm not sure where we're at.
It's not a canopy, I don't think exactly, but there, there is some sort of, uh, potential, um, scaling, hopefully.
But I thought we were also looking for power outlets and all that fun stuff for them, no?
Well, they, they don't have them now, I mean, most farmer's markets don't, you know, I mean, there, there's, there's a limited number. Uh, but, you know, that's something we, we need to talk with them about.
Right.
In this next phase two.
I guess I'm just concerned, is that part of Phase Two, Phase Three, or?
I think, I think farmers markets in the future, there is no phase. We're talking one, two, three?
Yeah.
That's a, a wish list down the road.
Interesting.
The, the discussions that I've been party to, you know, we've intended to interface with and respect the farmer's market. But we have not budgeted for any upgrades to the parking lot specifically for the farmer's market. We've talked about accommodations in the plaza, you know, for that, like we said, overflow or potential use there right across the, you know, where the line gets a little blurred, but not going west into the parking lot. There's not to say that we can't, you know, nothing is set in stone, but it's not in the current plan.
So what plans do we have to maintain that parking lot, because it looks kind of, it's not very presentable?
Yeah, add it to the list.
Well, no, I mean, we've always maintained it over the years for the farmer's market, I mean, resurfacing it. Uh, so I, I would assume that the city would continue.
It is a pavement to be managed.
Yeah.
That is city property, correct?
It is city property, and the hope was that in the winter eventually, that could become a nice skating rink, not a hockey rink, but a real skating rink.
So once this Phase Two gets in there with the kind of promenade area to the, you know, top left there, that's really gonna give the farmer's market a lot more.
Could they, yeah, could they use that?
Oh, yeah.
It's like a place to have the roots.
Why not?
I'm not promoting it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On Saturday for a couple hours, yeah.
I mean, I think that's something that the city appreciates, we have people coming in from out of town, from the immediate surrounding areas. Um, that farmer's market is a tiny little jewel that, you know, I think the city really.
That's why we protect it.
It's very well attended, yeah.
It is a big draw, I didn't put that on my list, okay, I forgot that.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my goodness.
I, I can tell just from a number of people that have reached out to me specifically, you know, in the construction in the last few years, and concerns about the farmer's market, discussions of the farmer's market, how valued it is in the community, is, is just sort of my observation. So, I, I, I like to think that we've tried to carry some of that respect through here.
Are there any power sources along that promenade?
I'm sorry?
Are there any power sources along that promenade, like the light, lighting at Christmas and that sort of thing, did we do any of that?
I, I think we're planting receptacles for Christmas lights.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there were like.
Something they could use to leverage for generators or whatever they're currently using, maybe we have a cost associated with that, I don't know if they're metered or what the deal is, but. I think that's something we should discuss with them, at least offer up, especially if we're gonna be doing all this construction, they're not gonna be able to use that, they're gonna have to use their existing parking lots.
Well, remember, they don't use this at all, this was mud.
I think there'll be receptacles there, though, I mean, Public Works is gonna want them for Christmas lights and.
Right.
Right.
Stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, we, when we were talking about this, that was part of the plan.
Yep.
Okay.
And put a few more extra, just in case.
Yeah, and there's one, there's one already in the, what do you call the, what's the big circle on the bottom? What's the?
Down here?
Yeah, like there's receptacles there already, and.
Right.
I'm sure they'll just kind of spark, parse them out through the park.
I mean, that goes along with the lighting too, it's easy to drag, drag more circuits.
Yeah, sorry, for this summer, we will have them in their parking lot area, correct? Because we're gonna have construction going on with this park.
Yeah, they're, that shouldn't, shouldn't really be disrupted.
Okay.
So in terms of.
Disrupted than for them.
In terms of how we get to the park, when we are doing this work, that contractor's going to have to come through that parking lot, because we can't access it off of Shoreline now. And we can't access it really through here, or at least we shouldn't, right? So that, and, and across the trail up here, those are gonna be the two ways that we're gonna get construction things in and out, so, uh, it's, it'll be a inconvenience to be managed, but.
Can you convey that Saturday mornings, try to move your stuff?
Yeah, because they shouldn't be working there on Saturday anyway.
Yeah, we need them to.
We do have to provide.
But they leave their stuff there alone, you know, staging area.
Can't we have them do it on the top, on the north side there?
We have to provide some kind of staging area, we can, we can designate it.
North where we just did the retard there?
We can designate it.
Yeah.
Asphalt.
Asphalt, yeah, whatever, something like that. Well, that, I think you know, you know what we want, so, good luck.
I, I think I, I think I know there are a lot of desires here.
Yeah.
But I, but I did, I did hear, uh, we have to get to the bottom of gas or wood fire.
Well, I love that you brought up the, um, Hopkins area, because it, it sounds like you learned a lot from putting that in place. So we'll appreciate your advice going forward, um, from what you've learned.
If, if you'll indulge me, I went to the opening of the Artory, because I live fairly close to that. Uh, and there was a thing there that I was actually kind of mad, it was the first time I'd ever seen it, the Public Works guys were there, and they had a, like a T-shirt, like a screen printing machine. But they were stamping things, and then, so then they were selling like T-shirts and fabric bags and things, and they were stamping them with just a gate valve cover. That said City of Hopkins Water, and they were, I mean, people were just buying it left, I was like, I am so angry that I never thought of this before. And people are, this is so cool, and I was like, well, now I gotta buy one, because I gotta support Hopkins Public Works, right, this is, this is neat, but that, those are the kind of things that come out of engaging the landscape architects and, you know, getting a, a varied pool of creative minds involved. And, and so I'm hoping to draw on those other people.
That would be really fun, especially when we, um, I don't know what the term is, but when we initiate the park, and people are coming in to see it, and we have an opening ceremony, but also to have someone there to make the T-shirt thing and maybe use the artwork from a student.
Yeah.
It's another contest, I know, a lot of cities do that with them, I think that would be fun.
I'll sell you my own water shirt for thirty million dollars.
A lot of T-shirts. Nice thought, Jesse.
We're gonna fund the water treatment plant, one, one six-dollar T-shirt at a time, we got so much.
He said, he said one thirty million dollar shirt.
He did say that.
A little rich for my. Or one thirty million dollar design.
So, so now that I've led us completely astray, there is a resolution, a council packet. Uh, that, authoring the, authorizing the preparation of plans and specs and ordering the advertisement for bids, uh, this is common practice, we do combine them all together at once. Uh, but in last year, the past few years, we've been coming back to you with a construction estimate after the design is finished. And I anticipate we'll probably do the same thing again here, we just like to have everything neat and tidy in the one.
What do you think, like March, or?
Uh, there's a, will you skip back to the letter, Jesse Matten had a, he had a, right there, April or May, but that would be without, this, this would.
That's with fall.
That's achievable for hard features that are not up for discussion.
Okay.
So, so that may be the kind of thing that leads us down the, you know, we'll put some gas lines in and we'll make a foundation for a fireplace, and then if we, you know, if there's still lots of input or the need for public engagement, that'd be the kind of thing we kick down to bring in later if we need to.
So just like what we did with last year, you know, mound's sick of being constructed the whole time, so, you know, obviously, we want to just, you know, get this going.
Is now a bad time to remind you that they are going to repave Shoreline Drive next summer?
Just let us know if they ever.
As noted.
They, they, not me, they, Hennepin County.
We can't control it.
But we still get.
And that'll be the summer, spring or summer, too.
Late summer.
It needs to be, the road is curved.
Late summer, yeah.
Well, it'll look good after.
It'll be nice and smooth.
It'll be really nice.
But it'll be inconvenient until they're done.
Right, yeah.
As with all things.
And everyone will complain that Auditor's Road doesn't exist anymore, because that was their bypass.
No one in this room is allowed to complain about that.
Well, one last thing, totally irrelevant to this, but when they repaint, make sure they repaint turn lines.
I don't think I get any say in that.
Well, help us out, man.
I know, I will, I will.
I know Jesse, Jesse's already working on it with the county, but I'm like, you know, when you go to Turner Caribou, right? And it's like a solid line, you feel like you're breaking the law, you know? But this isn't, I get it, it's temporary, but.
You're not wrong.
Yeah, anyway, okay, so we got this, uh, resolution, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll try again, I'll make a motion as a resolution authorizing preparation of plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the Lost Light Commons Improvement Project, Phase Two.
All right, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? All right, that passes, thanks, Brian.
Thank you, and thank you so much for the discussion, I'm gonna go madly take some more notes, so I don't forget all of that.
You can re-watch this video too.
After you got promoted, we haven't seen much of you.
Getting a motorcycle accident in July didn't help either.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no. Well, you look like you're, you got your bounce back in your step. Good to see you, thank you.
All right, we got council member reports, council member Pugh?
Well, I did go to the, um, SR, SRA, which is the rate commission that we belong to. And, uh, we have a lawsuit with, is it Excel? It's on the lights, and they think that that's finally gonna go through in, in the fall. But, you know, it's like a slow process and everything. There was a lot of discussion, and it doesn't affect us, I don't think, at this point, but there's a lot of discussion where, um, I guess Edina, Matanka, and Eden Prairie are having their wires buried. And there was a lot of discussion and sharing how to manage the subcontractors that the utility companies, so where we get there. There's lots of good advice on how to manage the bearing of cables, but that's, that seems to be a big thing in, in those larger cities, so far. And that was the only thing I did, I think.
And we got, uh, Councilwoman McAnney?
I have nothing to note.
Uh, Councilmember Casalano?
Nothing.
Councilmember Eric?
Um, I've been going to some training or, um, kind of an initiation into some of the different departments, and I'd like to thank the staff, I think that was very beneficial to myself. I know Sherry Wallace was also at the planning commission discussion with Sarah today, and I think that's really helpful, um, I hope that we continue that in future.
We'll, we'll do our first, uh, police commission meeting in a couple weeks.
I was gonna ask you about that.
You should get invited to it.
Yeah, and if, for some reason you don't, we'll, we'll make sure you get it, it usually comes out maybe about a week early, so, but I'll, I'm just making it right now.
Don't they send out like all four of the year or something, or, I think they already have preset dates or something, so. Okay, so I went to a, a meeting with our, our state senator, uh, like Coleman, or what's her name, Stewart?
Stewart Johnson.
Johnson or Johnson Stewart?
It's Stewart Johnson.
Stewart Johnson, okay, I always get them mixed up. Um, had a really good meeting, actually Jesse and I, uh, went over there and, and, uh, talked with her the other day. And she's very supportive of our water tube plant and needing more money. Um, I gave her, uh, kind of a copy of the bill that Representative Myers, uh, produced in the, in the House, where, basically, it's like, it's thirty million. And, uh, we're working back and forth with, with Myers on, and you guys, um, on how we get this language correct the first time this time. And do we split it up into a couple of projects, or, you know, because we have Phase, uh, Tranche One, Two, Three, and so technically we're on Two and Three, I guess, so. Um, do we just go for the whole thirty, which is kind of what we need? Um, and then if they say, yeah, well, you get ten again, or whatever, then how does that, you know, the, the verbiage works, so I appreciate all you guys' work behind the scenes on that as well. Um, anyway, back to our senator, she's, uh, very supportive of, you know, our need, and, uh, so, I, I, this is gonna, the newsletter's gonna come out, and. Um, I, I told her, I said, well, you're gonna be in the newsletter, and your email's gonna be in there, so get ready. Um, but if you're listening at home, or wherever you are listening, um, she's supportive, so is, uh, Representative Myers, but it still doesn't hurt to let them know. And the more emails, the more calls, the more letters they get, it's not a bad thing, even though they are supportive. Uh, we also, did you, do you have the, the, so we're gonna come up with, uh, I'm gonna pass this out, I want to send a letter to the governor. His budget's already out, and he already has kind of the highlighted project, but I think we need to make sure that he knows again, you know, that we need funding, and it's, it's gonna go right to him. Uh, the other thing is I, if anybody knows him, let me know, but we're trying to get an appointment with him. Um, we're also, we're also, on the City on the Hill Day, we're gonna, we already have appointments with, uh, both our senator and our state rep. We're also trying to get other people on.
On the committees.
The committees.
Yeah.
Yep, so if, if anybody knows anybody like Chair Lee, um, Chair Pappas, uh, and then of course anybody else that chairs any of those, um, you know, please reach out, because they need to know. It's been a couple of years since it came out on the bus tour, um, I think everybody knows down there, but, you know, you get turnover and, you know, it's, it's just good to keep, keep, uh, let them know, so. Um, so anyway, this is the letter, um, we drafted, and assuming y'all agree, I have a, I'm, I'm gonna kind of have one master copy, and then we're all gonna sign it, hopefully, if you guys agree. And then we're gonna UPS it to, to him, and we'll send electronic version and make sure that his staff gets it. And just so you know, and you don't have, you don't have Myers' copy, do you?
Uh, no, just.
No, that's fine, okay. Uh, Representative Myers sent his own version already to the governor, and I got a copy of it, I apologize for not bringing it. And then I'm gonna have the senator do the same, so she's gonna send one over as well. So if you guys, are they all color copies?
Yes.
Okay, just take one of them, and then let's just sign.
Sign it and pass it down.
Yeah.
Sign under our name or?
Someone doesn't agree, it's gonna look weird, because.
Okay.
You're gonna have a blank spot, but.
Do you have a pen?
So where's your, you're gonna, you're gonna sign right above your name?
Just sign maybe right, under your name or on the side, or whatever.
Right above our names.
Right above our names, because then you have them under sincerely.
Sure, do that, okay. Um, and then the other thing too, back to the senator, we were talking about, um, you know, again, we need thirty million, we, we want to cover this whole thing, um, you know, hopefully that works out. But we talked about having her draft a bill that would be kind of a Band-Aid for, for, you know, mound residents, and actually, she's talking about doing this like statewide program. So, um, we know that.
No, we're gonna use the same pen, sorry.
We, we know that if you have, uh, you know, water softener and reverse osmosis, and then you keep up your items, and, and, and they work, and then of course, double, double check, and get it tested, you know, through Bloomington, and. Um, but we know a lot of these things take out Magginess anyway, so what, what, we kind of came up with, uh, the three of us, and we thought, well, if, if you could, uh, draft a, a deal that says, you know, there's so much pooled money. And you can kind of go to apply, so let's just say I got a, a water softener for twelve hundred bucks, or, you know, whatever they cost, right? And then I got a reverse osmosis for sixteen hundred, you know, let's just say I spent three grand or whatever, and then maybe you get twenty-five hundred bucks back, right? Um, you have to fund a little bit, obviously, but, um, so she's working on doing that, and, you know, seeing, seeing if, uh, she wants to introduce that bill, so. Um, more to come, hopefully, and hopefully she takes that up, and maybe we can get support on both sides. Um, and again, this is more of a Band-Aid, but, and again, just so you know, if you're watching at home, and we're gonna have a, in March, we're gonna have, are you coming on? Uh, so Brian's gonna do our, uh, state of the, uh, water, uh, kind of our annual thing, just, hey, what's, what's the update, where are we at, uh, what can you do? And, uh, there's a lot of, uh, verbiage on our website, under the water tab, that you can go out there. We need support, obviously, from, from residents, to all of our elected other, I mean, we already know, we're already trying to do this, you know, as it is, but anybody kind of on different levels than we are. Um, you know, phone call, letter, email, more the better. Uh, we'll have a, a appointment on, uh, March, I guess, we don't, do you want to do the first meeting? I'm just gone the second, by the way, so I won't be here, so do it the first one.
So it needs to be the first meeting?
All right, do the first one, I'd like to be here, if you're gonna do, okay, so we'll do that, March ninth, or whatever that day is. Um, but again, there is o- options for you to take care of your own family, right? So you might have fine water, you might just want to test it, and you might come back and everything looks great, right? Obviously, you might want to test it once a year or whatever, but, um, and if you don't, obviously, you know, don't be drinking water, and get bottled water or whatever, so. Again, more to come on that, we'll, we'll talk in depth on that on, at the first March meeting. Um, so that's kind of what I got, does anybody have any questions on any of that?
Good work to keep battling on, to try to get resources, that's a lot of work.
It's kind of like a part-time job.
Right, yeah.
Behind the scenes, so, um, again, back to the City on the Hill Day, if anybody wants to come to that, I think you're coming, right?
Yeah.
City on the Hill, that is March ninth, actually.
Yeah.
March sixth, okay, so I'm.
Meeting's on the eleventh.
Meeting's on the eleventh, okay, so if anybody wants to come with, um, you know, the council, we're gonna try to meet some people down there and tell them that we need help, so. That's, that's what I got, so, anything else, anybody else wants to talk about? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, all right, we're adjourned.